Alicia, who's good, go ahead and call our work session to order. All board members are present except for Mr. Donley. We will note his presence if he shows up a little later. I have Dr. Bishop also with us and some of the staff is also with us. We have three things on our agenda today. We may do one little Zoom hiccup as the, if we get the opportunity, we'll take the boardroom into a blended, you know, session instead of everybody by themselves. But right now, we're just going to get going and cross our fingers. So the first item up is the budget. One of the things that we had asked for a couple of weeks ago was if there were any budget amendments or, you know, questions to be asked and considered that we get those ahead of time, ideally like last week, and I haven't seen anything. So I want to open this up to board members if they have questions of the administration, Dr. Bishop, Jim, his team. If there's anything like that, this is a great time to kick it off. And so it looked like Board Member Mitchell, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I, as I said last time, I am just so pleased that we're not having to change PTR. I'm glad we're not having to cut programs and so grateful for that ESR money. But I am concerned about is, are there going to be any changes with the fact that we didn't extend our state emergency order? Or is that all still status quo?
I don't know if Jim maybe wants to tackle that one.
So, so I don't think there's going to be-
Can I have the question repeated? I wasn't able to hear it.
And Member Mitchell, can you repeat your question for Dr. Bishop?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, yeah, I was just wondering about with the state not having extended the emergency order, does that impact, I know it impacts some federal funding. Does that impact that a elementary and secondary emergency relief fund money that we are building our budget around? Or any other significant money that we have incorporated into our budget?
Jim, you can go ahead and answer.
Yes, ma'am. I don't think there's going to be any immediate impact on us because we don't plan on using SRT2 funds within the next four to six, eight weeks. We expect to use it after that, certainly summer school and beyond. And, you know, there's plenty of time and space for the state to, the House to finish forming and for the governor to work with the legislature, I think, to come to some sort of solution as to whether the legislature will pass the bill or whether the governor would unilaterally put in the emergency restrictions. So CARES money continues to funnel through. We're still spending it. So at this point, it's not a significant concern for K-12. Other agencies that, that may be different.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Next up in the queue, I have Board Member Marseth.
So Jim, you say it's not a concern now as long as the legislative gets together or whatever they do. But if that doesn't happen and there aren't other things passed, I mean, I kind of want to know, does this affect us if, if nothing happens?
And to the President, to Member Marseth, in a worst case scenario, where the legislature and the governor couldn't work this out in the next several months, it could be problematic on both receiving and allocating SRT2 funds. But in the very near term, four to six weeks plus, I, I don't see a direct impact on K-12, although there probably are impacts on other agencies in the state, which will put pressure on the system to find a resolution.
Yeah, I, I am hopeful that that will happen.
Do any other board members have any comments or questions or pre-prepared motions that they wanted to talk about in anticipation of the budget being on our action items tonight? Board Member Hildy?
I just want to thank everybody for being part of the process. You know, when we started our pro forma, we really put out what our objectives were and we took the time to talk about it. And so I'm glad to see that we're kind of at a point where we can make a best practice vote tonight. It doesn't just say we rubber stamp anything, but saying does this align with their goals or not? And so I just really appreciate everybody's efforts in asking their questions well in advance and really, you know, doing all those professional practices. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Board Member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you. I don't have any changes. I think, I think this is absolutely aligned with our goals and guardrails. I just could not find, I did get the information in Board Connect about the ASD virtual, so I'm not sure who asked that, but that was helpful for me because I had a similar question. And I guess I just want to, how much does that program cost and where is it in the budget?
I think you all-
I brought my budget book today, so I might have missed it online, sorry.
Luckily, I brought mine with me.
Yeah, so Member Bellamy, before we get to, through the President, to Member Bellamy, before we get to the specifics in the budget, just wanted to share that the program was designed around keeping our students in our school district, you know, first. And then we looked to really have them transition. These are families that wanted to stay virtual, but transition them back to the building and have that easy transition as well as tied to the building. And so in this year, the ASD students, and we'll share that with some data today at the goal monitoring, actually enrolled at their home schools.
Okay. Now, I, I-
Talk about the budget piece of that, Andrew, Andy?
Okay.
Yes, thank you. So in the budget document, it is towards the end here. It's actually organization code 1892. We'll scroll through here.
1892.
It is on page, starting on page 406. We'll blow it up. So there's one thing to note on this. We did, you know, our office made a mistake when we were preparing this budget and we were supposed to take one FTE out of this organization instead. Instead, we accidentally took it out of IT's budget instead because it had the same position title. So this is actually a little bit overstated. It should have nine employees instead of 10. And one of these professional and technical employees are going to come out of there on our next version of that. So just to keep that in mind, you know, that's probably a little over a thousand, it's like, I think $105,000 that'll come off of this 1.9 million in the end.
Okay, yeah. That's fine. I just couldn't see where it was, where it was in the budget. So this is, I needed to understand better that we were able, are able to continue it. And so that was my question. I don't necessarily have any amendments or anything like that. Thank you. I just got my book today. I was scrolling through and it's not the same as scrolling. So thank you, Katie.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, Board Member Holloman.
Um, yeah, I was just going to throw in that I am impressed that we're coming up on a budget that is sustained like this and has this level of clarity. And I realize there are some unknowns out there in the future. It wouldn't surprise me at all if we were sitting here right now looking at various nightmare scenarios and layoffs and difficulties. And I really appreciate the superintendent and the staff for being able to bring a budget that keeps us whole. With, you know, with some caveats about what the future may hold and kind of gets us through all this. I, to me, it's always been a really big, scary, hairy organization and a lot can change through the year. The numbers are big and something goes off by a few percentage points and you're talking tens of millions of dollars. And, and that, that can be difficult. So the fact we're looking at basically getting through and being ready to enter the next year and see how many kids come back and all that other stuff, I, I think it speaks awfully well of the management capabilities of all of you and I deeply appreciate it. Thank you.
Still need my speaker on? Oh, I thought, I did. Member Marseth, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, you're up next.
Okay, so I just want to, you know, be, have everyone prepared that I am, because I think it's important during our board meeting to share with the public. And during our last legislative virtual fly-in, if you want to call it that, Representative Josephson and some others wanted to make it very clear that even though we are meeting our, we're not having to cut or anything like that, that's only because of the SRT2 funds. We do have a cliff that we're going to reach. And he said, we need to make that very clear through the district in how those funds are, so planning our budget and that those won't be sustainable. Eventually, they're going to go away. And when that happens, we're not going to have the funds to operate the school district. So, you know, I don't want to be the gloom and doom, but I want to make sure that even though we're, I mean, I'm happy. I'm sure everybody's happy that this is kind of budget we're ready to roll out. But in a year or two, it could look totally different. And as a district, I want us to be prepared and I want the public to be prepared.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, Board Member Bellamy.
And I guess my question is to the administration. How are you guys feeling about the budget? What are your, you know, what are your, what are your thoughts? What are you worried about or what are you happy about? It almost seems too easy to me, but because, but I'm thinking because we had our, our goals and our guardrails and you could, you had more guidance that you, that things just fell into place, even though it's, it's amid COVID. So I'm just thinking, because you're the ones that's got to live with what we approve.
Thank you. That's a great question. Through the chair to Member Bellamy, I have a couple of thoughts on that. And then Jim Anderson, on the money side, because, because certainly the planning around the budget is about the delivering of the mission. And so I'll speak to the mission. It's, we are looking forward to really having a new normal, if you will, because the old normal wasn't good enough for, for all our kids. Certainly, we look to make those improvements. But similar to if someone is creating their home budget, when you have revenue, it makes you have more choices. In this budget and then the actions forward, the choice isn't going to be in keeping FTE because we're going to be set and starting. The new discussions will be about how we effectively use the FTE and that keep, keeping us whole as we always used to be isn't good enough for all of our children. So we have to redirect the work and redirect the vision and the mission to what the board goals are. And so while right now, because the revenue matches expenses, that's wonderful in a budget. The real work, I guarantee, next year, as we move forward, after we start ourselves on this structure to get us going forward, when the recommended changes come to how best to meet student needs, that will once again cause anxiety and friction within the system because the change in what we have to do will affect us all, including myself and my staff and others. And we've seen that within our district structure when we've changed things that we've had to change technically, whether that was Zangle to Q, whether that was moving to Alice from another structure, whether that was changing a reading program. In some other work, in redirecting the ELL. I don't know if you recall, some of the best work that has come from this district and the greatest achievement and success of children has come in our ELL when we redesigned it. But yet, I don't want you to forget those three months of testimony about please don't remove our TAs and put them to, because it's, it's just difficult. It's, it's working with humans and changing human behavior in our organization. So I don't want to say it's going to be easy, Member Bellamy, and I'm maybe setting the stage for the work ahead. But certainly, in the truest sense of the budget of revenue meeting expenses, we're there. But the real work begins in meeting those goals that I strongly believe are the right goals that the board has really addressed, as well as the guardrails. They are due time to have that be our focus. Appreciate it, thank you.
No, and I, and I really appreciate that, Dr. Bishop, because even though we are, it kind of goes with Starr's comments about future. You know, this is, this is like, this is a one step in a long process. And we've got to be willing, as a board, we've got to be willing to support those recommendations and those innovations that come forward, which might shake us up a little bit, but we got to stay focused. So thank you for that. Mr. Anderson, did you want to add something?
Sure. I think having a smaller number of board goals that's much more clearly defined, plus the guardrails, is going to be helpful as we stand up the strategic planning committees that Dr. Bishop and Dr. Stock talked about because we can center those efforts around those, those goals and guardrails. And as we measure programs that are successful or less successful than others, and we start trying to reprioritize when money becomes short, it's, it is better to have very clear goals. It is better to have guardrails that keep your left and right boundaries in check as opposed to what Dr. Bishop alluded to, which is, you know, a lot of emotion and passion towards individual niche programs that maybe in the broader context of goals and guardrails, that program maybe doesn't deliver what it's supposed to. And maybe it doesn't reach the, the large enough audience that you're supposed to. So I, I, I can definitely see that the board's discussions on, on goals and guardrails before and during the pro forma, it looked like the board is, is pretty focused on staying within that, those parameters. It is going to help us get through. And when we do have to make reductions in the future, if the state can't increase education funding, I think we're going to be in a position to make the best possible recommendations to the board.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, were there any other questions by board members here today? Member Marseth?
So, Mr. Anderson, I guess, like, I don't feel like maybe the question got answered. And that is, based on what I heard from the representatives in Juneau, and I don't want to call it a false security because it is a security. It had those one-time funds for us to be able to do the things we need to do. And everything everyone has said is so absolutely true and moving forward. But what are we looking at? I mean, I, I think it's important to look at the long term. And so let's say in two years, when there's no more CARES funding or SRT2 or whatever. You know, I know that you have drawn a picture of kind of, you know, this graph. And what would be, I mean, I know it's a prediction. Nobody can be absolutely certain what's going to happen two, three years from now. But what if we don't, if our AD, if, if our, our funding is not adjusted, our ADM is not adjusted, and we no longer have this one-time funding?
I, I think the easiest way to look at it is we were going into development of next year's budget with just under a $30 million shortfall. We have an average inflationary cost of 10 to 12 million dollars per year. So at some point, if we were to revert back to 2015 money with no outside-the-formula assistance from the state or federal government, then you're really looking at roughly $30 million plus $10 million for every year that it, it prolongs. You know, we're, we are, the vast majority of our money goes towards people. But I think the, the real key, and we're certainly not blind to the future reality, if we could get multi-year funding with any increase in BSA, where you could predictably plan a program whose lifespan lasts more than 12 months, then it will help us prioritize those programs that maybe, maybe aren't as successful as others within the constraints and, and our guardrails and goals. But it really is. I think Andy and I look at it at 10 to 12 million a year, plus the current deficit that we overcame with the use of SRT2 and CARES fund this, this current year. And that's the easiest possible way to look at it, all things else remaining the same.
Through the President to Member Marseth, I'd also like to add that the conversation is actually not new. I have, this is my fifth year as the anchor superintendent. I had five years as the MATSU superintendent and six years as the MATSU assistant superintendent and was directly responsible for programming and budgeting, in creating programs for children. And similar to what Mr. Anderson stated, that a predictable amount. Interestingly enough, the last time that we had a predictable amount that we could see in a multi-year period was during Sarah Palin's governancy. We, at that time, right before that, we increased the special education. It was the final year of the 13 multiplier that moved up from nine to 11 to 13, and we had three years out. That changed when the election of, at the time of Parnell and Governor Walker. And if you recall, my very first year coming in here, they pulled back 50% of the $100 increase that was expected for that year. So that was pulled off and out of the former governor's budget for the new one, consequently put back in. I'm just sharing that these scenarios have not changed in, in my lifetime here in an executive position with school districts. Hence, that drive for the school district to continue to advocate for sustained foreseeable multi-year funding, even if it isn't what we would like, at least it's what we can count on. It's not to say that we haven't received additional funds. It's just that we do the same dance every year. You will see in the state books, an increase to school districts, except for this past year, I think, because of the enrollment. They, they went away from ASD. But in most years, just true dollar amounts, there's been an increase. It just comes with such anxiety and stress and a lot of times on the backs of different programs and having to readjust. So I, I would love that if we got to a place through advocacy of a structure that we could count on, Member Marseth, as you shared. But again, this, this is just going to be a significant amount. But I would like to share that this is the way our state has funded education for quite some time. And it is stressful and creates a lot of anxiety that, that we don't necessarily really need in, in the work that we do. So, but, but just wanted to remind everyone that it's kind of, it's been like this for quite some time, but now the, the dollar amount is increasing.
Next up in the queue, Board Member Mitchell.
Yeah, thank you for that, Dr. Bishop and Member Marseth. And I, I do want to recognize, I believe it was House Bill 285, when Governor Parnell passed the education budget. That was a three-year predictable budget that had some increases built into it. And that was, you know, a big relief for schools. And then, as you mentioned, that got reversed. But, Mr. Anderson, I'm just wondering, the $30 million shortfall that you're talking about, is that, are you talking about fiscal year '21 versus fiscal year '22? If we didn't have an increase in any kind of funding, if the funding were just static?
Well, what, what the $30 million reflected was the bulk of the CARES Act funds for one-to-one automation that we wanted to roll over from this school year into next year. It also reflects the 8.33 million that the board directed use of fund balance for the health teachers and to retain other staff that would have been eliminated last year as a result of a budget deficit. And then about a $10 to $12 million annual deficit. So it's really a combination of a multiple things. And, and we're very fortunate that we're able to retain one-to-one automation. We're able to use the SRT2 funds for a number of things to include retaining the same PTR. But we're not using fund balance, or at least we're not recommending that we use fund balance for next year because frankly, we don't need it with the SRT2 funds. So it's really a number of things that resulted in about a $30 million deficit.
Okay, I just wanted to, you know, have people understand that that is, if we wanted to maintain basically the types of programs we have this year for next year, that's what that $30 million reflects.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Thank you.
Next up in the queue, Board Member Holloman.
Um, yeah, I was just going to touch back on Member Marseth's comment and Superintendent Bishop's response that, you know, this budget feels like a relief, but it is based on assumptions that may or may not happen. And our mission every year is, now that we have this set up based on some reasonable expectations, is to do whatever we can to help make sure those things come true. And it's always just been for one year that, as Superintendent Bishop said, that's how we do it in Alaska. You may have a great year where there are some increases, you can make some expansions. Doesn't mean a thing about the following year. It's just a new ballgame all over again. A matter of trying to go out to the public and sell what we've been doing and advocate for it. I, it hasn't been any other way in as long as I can remember or have been part of it. So I, once we pass this, I, I think we have to remember that then we do have a job to do. We have to make sure our parents understand we need their voices behind us. They need to be speaking up, those that we can encourage to do that. And we have to make sure that the legislature does follow through and emphasize to them the damage if they don't. Then we'll get through a year and we'll start the whole thing over again.
Member Marseth?
Yes, I did want to point out to Member Mitchell too that 28, 26 million of that deficit is funding 235 FTEs. That is coming out of the SRT2 funds also. So we've made that over.
Right, and that's to maintain the PTR that we have this year. But yeah, if we could get to a three-year, to Dr. Bishop's point, if we could get to a three-year, you know, a rolling three-year budget, even if it's not at the levels that we would ideally like, at least we have predictability and we don't have that seesaw every year.
Yeah, we just can't let our guard down. We still have to be advocating, no matter how, how good it looks.
All right, so I'm not seeing any other hands up in the queue. So I'd like to move on to our next work session topic here, which is back-to-school update. And so at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Bishop to just give us a mind's eye on where things have gone the last few weeks.
All right, thank you, Madam President. And this is some just exciting work. We are now entering our second week with all students in elementary. And if, I believe whoever's doing the slide, we're seeing two slides at once on the, we're seeing the notes page and the slides. So if you could just run the slideshow, I think. Woo, there we go. It's still a- It's still a little off kilter, but we'll, we'll share it. I just wanted to, yeah, maybe take it off of sharing and then reshare it. If you can look at your screen, who's ever controlling that. All right. It's just pictures, but we like to see our pictures, right? It may do the same thing, because we're just... But it's okay to just look at half of the pictures too, so we, just for time reasons. So we just wanted to share, we're back in school, three through sixth, as well as pre-K through two. And each day, we meet to look at our schools and being able to staff them and answering staff concerns and whatnot. But this is a picture of secondary schools. And I'm sure someone who's controlling these can see that it's only half of pictures are showing up. But this is a secondary school. And we, later today, I will share some, ah, there we go, we fixed it. So we do have some secondary small groups in session. This is from Mirror Lake, they did early on a family night. So this was actually occurred in the evening with kids and their parents to come in and do some hands-on activities. And wanted to share, there was a question about attendance. And I want to share that our, we had to create, our IT did a new script and code for doing attendance. So we just have it reported, because i-if you will, when we were in ASD Virtual, as well as ASD in-school, but happened to be zooming from home, there was a latitude given to families about how to count attendance, because we found our younger students who went to daycare and other things during the day because their parents worked. The attendance was accounted for by participation in the evening, so they could watch a recording of the session, do their work, and be counted. And so this is strictly counting, if you will, bodies, which is very different than our other attendance. We had to quickly turn it around. But as of last Friday, it gives you a quick look, it's an internal look, so we know how many students. The enrollment is the number of kids who are enrolled at that level in elementary, as well as secondary. And if you take a look at ASD Virtual, that's a separate enrollment just to show you, but they also are included in the enrollment of the schools, because they are enrolled at those particular schools. The alternative school, then the special school, add up to have the total enrollment of 43,591. Those in attendance, you can take a look at how many actually are present in the classrooms as, as we see them. And so that shares how many students in elementary are present, as well as how many students in secondary are actually physically coming into buildings. And just wanted to share that we have created a new track for this. But it is different than our traditional, because we're still allowing, you know, for, for other purposes, ASD Virtual and others, that if you, your engagement is part of your attendance, when it's not a direct Zoom and it's asynchronous. ASD back in school, we provided this flyer in December, and we're going to continue with the work. There was a little bit of discussion in regard to the in-person classes and some really concerns brought from the different levels about the high schools having somewhat of a time off or a grading day, and elementary deserved that as well. And just so you know, our elementary program is five days a week. Our secondary program, and I want to show you, we slowed it down so that we could actually really have a look into the program and, and share with everyone the expectations. They are very high with the engagement on Wednesdays. If you go back, one of the key features is that we have articulated March 15. This is also a concern from our employees, some of them, as well as our families. But we have shared, March 15 is our startup. And our families will be offered an opportunity to keep online with Zoom, similar to how we would if kids were quarantined for a week, that we continue to serve them and then they can actually re-enter. Having 43,000 students, almost 44 in our district, keeping kids out of school one more week was not an option. And I really looked at this as an equity issue. People who might look more like me and have the means, such as I do, having worked in a school district for 31 years, I might have the availability to have a spring break and cash to go on a plane trip. We need to start looking at our practices, and this was my start and, and a call that I made that said, you know, not a lot of people have that opportunity, and children have been out of school for quite some time. I believe we can make a March 15 start. And really, that, that was called for that reason, I wanted to share that. But the, let me share on the next slide a little bit about the secondary. We did have, the first one is the current program, and then the interest in other programs of all the secondary students. We have about 22,000, so about 50% of our parents responded with what they would like for their children. And this helped us really create this next flyer that outlines the last quarter of school. And this is on our website, and we're also building one for elementary. Elementary does not have the hybrid. Elementary has an opportunity to keep up for a couple of weeks on our Canvas courses for students who travel or perhaps are out on quarantine. But the, the hybrid approach, we have kids in elementary straight five days. These are what's offered at the secondary level, and I'm just going to review them. The in-person, of course, is coming back to school. The hybrid is where they're continuing to do the courses from their teachers presently, but only have one day a week for direct contact. And we've really spelled out that contact to demonstrate internally with our elementary and secondary that we all are working on that day, and we're working from school, and we're meeting with kids. It is not a day to grade or plan, which was initially shared, shared out. The ASD Virtual, of course, has always been an option. And then ASD homeschool are some of our homeschool programs. And you can look down where it says Teachers and Staff, ASD Certificated Online Instructors Padilla. And it just gives a little bit more information. So we're working with the last quarter of school, simply with our kids who are accumulating credits and having a seamless transition. And it was our high schools, two specific high schools, that really worked to dig into this. I think Service and Wes led the way with their planning and really their advocacy for their teachers to do this and to meet with students on Wednesdays. So you see, the next slide will really show their schedules. So for the efficacy of our programs, again, because it looks different at different levels, wanted to show that there actually is a direct Zoom or meeting time for Period 1, Period 2, Period 3, for kids who remain in a hybrid. That while they will catch up with Canvas shells and the Canvas courses that are uploaded on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, they actually will be able to meet with their instructor and have lessons on Wednesdays. All students who are back in school will have access to these Wednesdays as well. So if I learn something or I'm struggling with something, I have an extra day that I can enter and engage with my teacher, no matter what program I'm in. So ASD in-school or the hybrid, both have access to the teachers on this day. And of course, the middle school schedule operates very similarly, but on a different timeline, as you can, can see there. So with that, I just wanted to share that, you know, we're, we're back up. Every day, we meet in a huddle to hear the concerns again, to, to look at cases, to track. We have not had, with a month of being in school, any more cases reported to us than we, when we were not in school. And so again, cases come to us, whether, you know, a child is asymptomatic and parents share, you know, someone in the household, a mom or dad from their work had it. And so we know, but our parents have been great with telling us and sharing that information. We, of course, symptomatic children are tested or asked to be tested. We have protocols in place, very strong contacts home directly. And then we put those on the public website after the schools have had a chance to contact their own families first. And that's our back to school story.
All right, it's a good time if board members have questions, but I wanted to just acknowledge that Board Member Donley is in the boardroom with us and has joined us. And so thank you for that. Everybody else is kind of logged in, so I can see blue hands. But when I see yours, if you have a question, I will absolutely call on you. So first one up is Board Member Marset.
So Dr. Bishop, I just want to, I guess verify what in-person training will look like in our middle school and high school.
In-person courses for fourth quarter?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep, they will look like teachers teaching kids. Kids will go to classes, three different classes in the day. And they will not be eating there, they'll have a snack there, but the, the full lunch program, they'll be on their door out, they'll receive it. It's early in the day, but they will have time to eat in between classes and things like that.
Thank you.
Did any other board members have any comments or questions on this latest back to school update? There's a few. Board Member Bellamy.
Just a further clarification, Dr. Bishop. In-person does not negate teachers using technology as part of their instruction, is that correct?
That's correct. In fact, many teachers, because they've utilized the Canvas Shell platform, they, they upload their courses there in case kids are absent. It's, it's just a very good, effective tool for teaching, whether you're in school or out of school. So that kids, if they need to resee something, they know exactly where to go help. That's where the communication tool is. It, that's where the kids can upload their work. So our Canvas shells, again, at the elementary level, were built for the reading and math, the primary subjects as well, so that if kids are gone, there's videos, there's tapes on there, there's resources. And so teachers can utilize these and go back to them. You know, obviously, you know, just, just share whatever they would like. So actually, a little bit of the silver lining in this whole procedure is the growth of expertise by our teachers who choose to use some of these pretty neat things, no matter whether they're face-to-face or not. And that's happening now in our schools. I observed a couple of math classes that were phenomenal in using some of the tools. And so to your question, you know, we, we built competencies and we expect that as long as we can use technology to accelerate learning, it's going to be a good thing.
Okay, thank you.
Next up in the queue, Board Member Mitchell.
Thank you. I know that one of the concerns at the secondary level was the huge number of students in the hallways during passing period. Can you talk about what that will look like?
We can share, if Dr. Johnson wants to share it all. Really, it is, the passing time isn't a long period of time, I can share that, with ability, they basically have to move, and they're not going to be anywhere for 15 minutes or longer with peer group. But Dr. Johnson can just share a look about our mitigation techniques for this. Yeah. She'll get on just...
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you for the question through the President. Passing time is definitely a tricky, a tricky thing for our large secondary schools. So one, one of the, the methods we're dealing with that is a shorter passing time, as Dr. Bishop mentioned. But we're also not utilizing hallway lockers this year. So students are going to be expected to go directly from one class to the other. We're also employing bathroom breaks that are supervised during classroom times, so that students have an opportunity to do, take care of their personal business during class time, where it's less kids in the hallway and they're, they're not mixing as much during the passing time. Because typically, at high school and middle school, that passing time is utilized for them to talk to other teachers, stop at their locker, talk to friends, that sort of thing. So it'll be, it'll be a little bit more regimented. We're also doing some staggered releases by hallway, so that there are less kids in the hallway at one time. So if you have four different hallways, you might release one hallway to, to circulate then the next hallway, and then the next hallway, so that there's less kids in that hallway all at the same time. So those are a few of the strategies that we're employing around that passing time for, for secondary.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. And in addition to mask-wearing and other mitigation techniques that are already in play in the schools.
And of course, we're only going to be having two passing periods a day versus the normal five, right?
Yes, that's correct. That's a big one too. Thank you for bringing that up.
Do any other board members have questions for Dr. Bishop or her team? All right, I'm not seeing any. I just want to say thank you, I know that, to Dr. Bishop and just all of the hard work behind the scenes that a lot of people don't see. And there are a lot of moving parts and pieces to this, and a lot of different stakeholder groups to try and work with and to find that win-win that's going to work for everybody to the best of the plan's ability. Just thank you for the continued work on that. You know, as we look on the horizon a month from now, to have as many possible of our kids back in school is, is an amazing thing. And so thank you for that. Moving on in our agenda. New business? Anybody have any new business they want to bring up on the fly or talk about real quick? Member Hildy?
I mean, we, we have like a lot of emails about attendance. So I feel like maybe we should just say that, like, in public and not by emails. So everybody's on the same page. Maybe like review our attendance policy, and then like, so everybody knows going forward what to expect. So everybody, you know, can be equally held accountable and not, and feel good about it.
Yes, as board members know, email was sent out earlier today, prior to today's meeting. I own that, maybe it should have gone out a week ago. But just talking about our board policy for meetings, about the boardroom is open now, and that Zoom should be the exception, not the norm. And I'm very appreciative to, you know, have gotten the conversation that I got back and the feedback that I got back from folks, to better help me understand where people are and stuff like that. But moving forward, short of extraordinary circumstances, of which some of them I acknowledge and know, expecting in-person board participation, as we are expecting of our staff and our students as well. Part of the board policy, which does call for 75% attendance, even though there are other mitigating circumstances, is also letting the board president know, so she can help make that informed decision, you know, for meetings and stuff like that. Member Hildy?
Yeah, and I just want to clarify, it's the board members, each one of our responsibility. Like, like the board president doesn't have to reach out to you, that's our board policy. And so, you know, if I go out of town, I call Lisa and say, here. And then if she thinks I'm doing that all the time, we're going to have a conversation about that. But Zoom is great, and we want to be able to use it. And if you're on vacation, I love for people to call in, like, that's a cool thing we can do. And we talked about this before with phoning in, and there's no reason that count, count for attendance in the same way. So just that we're, we're all practicing good communication, and over-communicating is good too.
Member Marset.
Yeah, I, I want to be very transparent in that I will be in Arizona for the next three meetings. That was part of my agreement, was staying on the board. And I will be back April 6, I believe, is my last school board meeting. But I want to be transparent, I want the public to know. You know, my husband's been without me, and that was part of my agreement to stay on the board until the election.
Thank you very much. Next up, Member Mitchell.
Yeah, and I'm wondering if maybe we want to take a look at this policy in governance, because I know, for example, the Assembly changed their policy so that telephonic participation is accepted as, you know, being there. And I don't advocate that, but I do have to say that I think that Katie, our IT team, everybody has made it just amazing to do this. It feels almost like being there. As much as, you know, getting together with people in groups of three in the backyard around a fire pit feels almost, with masks on, feels almost like socializing.
Thank you. Thank you. And this is probably at some point of policy, we do want to revisit because it is somewhat contradictory in what it allows for and what it says. And so there are some, you know, different ways we can approach this. All I can do for today is today's policy with, you know, EOs or mandates and all of the mitigating, you know, things and put it all together. So that's all I'm trying to do at this point, you know, by holding us accountable for our own policies as they are currently written. So anybody else for new business? All right, next up is RFIs. And one of the things, we had sent an email, Ms. Margot and I, or maybe Margot sent it out after discussion, about possibly, and it would require, you know, maybe a straw poll voter of some sort, because we do have board policy in place that talks about RFIs and how they kind of get onto the log. Instead of hashing them out once a month at a work session, if the board would be willing to consider the idea of the president and the vice president, along with the superintendent at the planning meetings, which happen twice as often, helped to prioritize the RFIs to get them in place. And so we were looking for some feedback on that, on what people thought, to try and help speed up a process and try and figure things out. If there was a deadlock or something that was just way out there, it would obviously come back to the board, but some of them can be easy. Member Hildy?
Thank you. My preference is to keep it the way we've been doing it. The reason we started this was, you know, if one or two board members, we each have our own pet project we want to work on. And then it tends, it uses a lot of district resources. That's what was happening. That's why we kind of brought it back. And then it requires a majority of the board to say, this is actually something we want to pursue and spend time on. If they're low, I'll call them low dollar, but time and money are the same thing, right? That's, you know, that's an easy one. Let's get those questions answered. So I'd be open if it was like quick stuff and you know, if that helps it. But if it's things that are going to be over, you know, a day's worth of work or something, then it would maybe come back to the board. So some kind of change there, I'd be open to.
Okay. Member Donley?
Well, the thing I find kind of ironic about the current policy is if I was just a member of the public and I submitted questions to the superintendent, the superintendent's wonderful about responding to people. But as a board member, I have brought things that I wanted to know to the board through this process and it's been delayed. I mean, I'd actually probably get a faster response if I, because you do such a good job responding to the public, if I was just a member of the public. So that's a little frustrating.
Member Marseth?
I am not in favor of moving in that direction. And the reason being is it's a process, it's a board process. And I think the board is the one that needs to either vote or not vote on this. It's taking responsibility away from board members.
Well, Katie, any chance you have RFIs you can pull up on the screen? Because we got four more to whip out that we didn't get through last time. Yep. Oh, now I remember where we left off. All right. So this is one, eighty hours, two people.
And I just wanted to say that we've broken these into two different, the student ones are a little bit easier because they're logged, the adult ones, because they're put under harassment, not racism. We'd actually have to go into the files to look for as far back as we have. So I just wanted to share that, that student records, we're working on those quicker and we're able to probably publish them to you this week. But the adult, because they're just written about harassment and different things. We don't, we'd have to literally go back into the actual paper documents for those.
Okay. Member Donley, if you want to speak to it real quickly?
Oh, you're calling on me? Thank you. I was just going to say, the last time we talked about this, I didn't get the opportunity to offer to reduce the timeframe of this. If it would be more acceptable to do it for like the last three years, I would find that really helpful.
Okay. All right. So it sounds like there's a reasonable amount of time that can be done, a reasonable time expectation that has been adjusted for it. And so now for board members, where does this fit on the immediate, short or long-term expectation of board members? Member Hildy?
I mean, I see it fitting into board guardrails or whatever. And so that makes sense to me, but we haven't had school, I mean, in-person school. So I guess my priority is not immediate, but I think it's interesting. I'm not confident of the data to start with, you know, so I would maybe put it on long range. And then, you know, revisit it this summer or something. Because I know that it's not maybe something that's always reported either, you know.
I've had that same question, too. But if I understand correctly, Member Donley, did you want this to have in discussion on the current governance policies that's being worked on?
Madam President, I think it's particularly timely, considering there's an audit that seems to be related to these matters going on right now.
Okay. So looking for board feedback, I've got one that says longer range, but I I don't know if I should just say, is it a short-term goal and show me your thumbs up or thumbs down? So that I can get an idea where, I need to figure out where to place this. I have three options. How do you want to do it?
I have a question first.
Go ahead, Member Marseth.
So with the equity audit, won't these things be reported in that audit?
Through the president to Member Marseth, I'd have to look at the data pieces, but it's really an audit about opportunity to teach and about using student data to demonstrate where our kids are and then talking to staff and students about, do we have, you know, what are the hills that we see the roadblocks to having all kids be successful? So I think the board's idea of an audit to strictly go into racism and this and this and this and is, that's not, it's not a technical audit. It is utilizing our data, which we have already, that the board gets to see that we report on, looking at opportunities, looking at employment data, looking at student data. And then I actually participated in the first, and I was going to share this during the superintendent update. It was really four questions. What are the really great things happening in ASD? You report on them, that you do. What are some of the challenges in ASD? You share, anybody could share wherever, whatever position, I mean, it was totally open in small groups. What, are there any? If you wanted something better to happen, like what are any roadblocks that you see are occurring in your system? What do you think you can do about it? Like four questions in an hour. Three people were in mine and it was a moderator. So it, that information anecdotal will be coupled with the actual reality of how kids are doing and the disproportionality. And again, for those that aren't familiar, we've time and time again, reported on disproportionality in special education. It's a federal requirement for the funds that you receive. So you look at, is there a disproportionality of people in special education to other areas of your school district? And then you drill that down into categories, student groups of disproportionality of people of race. And so it's just very similar to looking at the data set and identifying are all kids in, you know, their distribution achieving in your school district? And then why or why not? What can you do about it? So it's not, I would say, digging down into racism, no, it's really about academics as well as employees. You know, one of the things the board has is, you know, our workforce being representative of our students. It's about those things, not, you know, I don't, where the board's mind was and the mindset, it's really about students and outcomes.
So my question is, is, and this is going to come across not like I want it to, but is it important to go back when we're moving forward? And because we've been out of school for a year, I would think, let's start with the school year that we're going into. Let's collect the data. That's going to be in our anti-racist policy. But really, is it just affirmation people want? I mean, I don't think you can go back and look at the data just because it's been so weird. And I'm not saying there hasn't been. I'm sure there have been cases, but I'm of a mind, let's move forward. We have it on our board goals. And let's do what we're supposed to do and start tracking the data from the beginning instead of going back.
Board Member Bellamy?
Yes, just, you know, I think the data, whatever data comes back is going to really look, be classified as either discriminatory, harassment, something, and it may have a basis and it may not. So if we want racism to be a credible disciplinary category, discipline category, whether it's for our adults or in our EEO department, then we're going to have to, we're going to have to set that up. Because what you are going to get, you're not going to get much, because we don't call it that in this district. We call it discrimination. We call it harassment. And if we're going, depending on how that data is going to be used, I do not think it will be a credible way to look at where we are trying to go in the future. Thank you.
Madam President, through the president to Member Bellamy, and those categories are set up by the federal requirements for reporting. So just so everybody knows, it's not that we just created any. But
I understand.
The audit is really kind of a capacity check for equity, like where are we and what's our ability? The board has these goals. So the board, you know, in seeing where we were going last year, we began this process to be able to know where are we and what's our capacity to grow. And it has both the data approach to student as well as the qualitative assessment of who's in there. But it's going to be a combination of both, like these particular things, they're not asking for these. It's very different. But, I mean, we can certainly look, it's just that we're going to have to open the files of the adults, like student, we have records that we could really briefly electronically look at. The adults, we don't have that. We'd have to literally go into, once it was harassment, we'd have to go into, as you know, Member Bellamy, like the actual notes.
All right. So right now, I can see my, I got three of us in the room and I can see four board members on the screen. What, we have three categories, immediate, short-term and long-term. For category one, for immediate.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I think it should be removed. I don't think we need it. Because we're moving forward. I don't think the policy we have.
Okay, then a show of hands of who would like to keep this on as an RFI and then further prioritize it. And so so right now, there's only two. So, all righty, it is five oh six. So we now have the rest of the RFIs that are not going to get done this month. And I guess we will have to come back to them another time.
Other time, it just takes time. Yeah.
So at this time, we have an executive session that we need to switch over to. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session and then we will have to change into a different Zoom.
I moved to adjourn to exec session for the purpose of the superintendent evaluation.
A second.
All right, let's everybody get work session is adjourned and we will transfer over into the executive session. Thank you.